And if we could all please rise, the Honorable Kathy White, Councilmember, is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember White. Good evening and welcome to the June 14th Study Session of Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,923rd Regular Meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, June 28, 2021. I believe we have all members of the council with us this evening, and I have an announcement to make, and that's that we have new data on item number 12. Council, does anyone else have any announcements they'd like to make? All right, at this time, we go to the audience. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to communicate with the council on any item not on this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Karen Bonanno. I'm the Executive Director of Livonia Saber Youth Coalition, and I wanted to thank you all for your continued support in our lease agreement that we have here with the city, and to let you know what an honor it is and how humbling it is to do the work that we do with the foundation right here in our city center. So, thank you. I apologize I missed my opportunity at the last meeting. It was my innocent ignorance on city council protocol and some bad information. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen, and thank you for all of the work that you do, and congratulations on a very successful 5K this past center that...
I'll see you all there next year.
Yes, that raised a lot of funds for your great programs. All right, anyone else? All right. Tonight's meeting, this meeting, is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken. However, councilmembers, we will offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each agenda item. The resolutions offered may include an approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered, and there are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting of Monday, June 28, 2021, where they will be officially voted upon. If you would like to participate in any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please approach the podium on either side of the room when that item is called, and you will be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is the city or private entity, will make the initial presentation, followed by remarks from those in the audience wishing to speak. So, please come to the podium when the item is called. When you reach the podium, please state your name and address for the record, so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you in the minutes for this meeting. It will also let the councilmembers and the television audience know whom is speaking to them. And I would like to say that it's very nice to be asking people to come to the podium instead of pressing star six to be heard, so that's a nice thing. We're getting back to normal. So, if when you come to the podium, I say star six, you'll know that that really means it's your turn to talk. All right, we will begin, and we do have, I think I mentioned, new data on item number 12, and I'll refer specifically to that data when we reach that item. The first item under New Business this evening is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Dan West, President of Livonia Chamber of Commerce, to host a gathering with live music at Ford Field, which is located at 33841 Linden Avenue on the evening of Friday, July 30, 21, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. Good evening, Mr. West.
President McIntyre, members of council, good to see all of you in 3D. It's nice to see all of you.
And I hope you liked the plug.
Virtually, not virtually?
I hope you liked the plug we gave the chamber at the earlier meeting, and it was met sincerely.
It helps that a few board members here to basically introduce themselves to her on the way out.
It's the best advice, some of the best advice we can give a new business in the city, which is to come connect with the chamber, anyway.
Well, anyway, I appreciate the time you're giving and the consideration today. How this started was about less than a month ago, when it appeared that the state's orders limiting social interactions were going to reach some sort of conclusion around July 1st. We started talking with Livonia Parks and Recreation about possibly getting together a fun evening. One of the more enjoyable things of our town is the spree and the beer tent and the bands, and it's just a chance for so many friends and neighbors to get together and see each other. And so, since spree is not able to roll this year, we thought we would try to replicate it for one evening in an event we're calling the Love Livonia Party, which would be on Friday, July 30 at Ford Field. What we have cooking is that within the four ballfields right there, it'll be fenced in, it'll be a 21 only crowd, 21 older crowd. We have two bands planned for the evening. One is Twisted Tarantulas, which is more of a classic rock, southern rock type band, which will play for 90 minutes, and then Power Play Detroit, which is, will play for two hours, and that is more of a pop cover band. And we have O'Malley's, which will be setting up a bar and food area, since they have a off-site permit of which they're allowed to apply for. So, we contacted them, and then, but, you know, we got all the full allotment of porta-potties and private security and all that good stuff going on. But probably one of the more things which is pertinent to the application that we have here today is that we have contracted a sound company that we would have control over, not the bands. And so, we met with them last week, and they will have directional sound, which is being considered to the nearby neighborhood there at Ford Field, and also to be able to control it to where I don't, I'm sure in the distance it'll echo, but not nearly as loud to the other homes in that area right there, so we're being considerate of that. But more importantly, if it gets too loud, we have control over it as the event organizers with that. So, with this event, we are asking city council's approval for the noise ordinance waiver, so we, up till 12:00 midnight, but our plan is to be done by 11 o'clock. We're just asking for that hour flexibility in the case that there's a technical delay, a weather delay, or something like that. So, that's basically the petition, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Or if the boomers go crazy and we won't leave till we hear one more Chicago song or something, right?
I think that's when Frank will direct you to O'Malley's for the indoor afterglow, so.
Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I know you reached out to probably all of us, and we've all had these discussions and stuff like that. You just mentioned private security, and we're all familiar with the spree being secured by the Livonia Police and a lot of reserve forces and some cert members and stuff like that. Can you briefly explain why the need for private security and how they would interact with the Livonia Police Department?
We did a walkthrough last week with Livonia Police, the Blue Line Protection Group, Parks and Recreation, and then some of the other vendors involved. And in talking with Chief Cade, he thought it was appropriate that we had private people within the fenced-in area within the event, and then Livonia Police would handle the things outside of the fenced-in area. So, that is how that's being coordinated, and just, you know, we're trying to be, we're trying to make sure people aren't hopping over the fence to get into 21 only crowd, and also to help support the check-in, wristbanding, all that type of stuff, to make sure that people of age are in the area.
Okay, so when you say private security, you mean Blue Line?
Blue Line, yes.
Okay, so that would have been helpful, and you could have avoided the question altogether, and you just said Blue Line, somebody who we are familiar with and who we know.
Yes, and Mike Riley and his group are talking with Chief Cade and Greg Yon, who is here as well, and then Tom Grolski met with us last week.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Toy, and then Councilmember Donavick.
Certainly, to Mr. West, if I may. Mr. West, thank you very much for doing this. Great idea. Is this a free event, pretty much?
It'll be, we're going to charge $10 admission to get in, but we have a lot of sponsors to help with the logistics of the cost of all this as well.
Perfect, thank you.
But pending the schedule that we're allowed to put together, that's when we'll start ticket sales. We've not started ticket sales yet.
Sure, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Donavick.
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks, Mr. West, for coming tonight. I appreciate it, and thanks for all the work the chamber does. I know it's 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. There's no, do you think any kids are coming? Are there any kids' activities outside the fenced-in area?
This is one of the things we talked about. There are no kids that, we're only focused on what goes in within the fenced-in area, and that's where the police, the Livonia Police Reserves will be watching out there to make sure nothing inappropriate's going on outside of that. But no, there's no kids. This is a 21 older event. We're just trying to get friends and neighbors together for a night after what we've been through the last year and a half, and that's all we're simply trying to put together here.
Yeah, and remind me, is there food there? I can't, did we say?
Yeah, so O'Malley's plans to have a limited menu of food there as well, yes.
Awesome, okay, well, good luck to you, and I think it's a great event. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Jolly.
I'll offer an approving for consent. I think it's good. I'm looking forward to it.
Madam President.
Vice President Barr.
Just one question. Dan, you said, did you say you wanted this noise ordinance waiver from 7:00 to midnight? I know you said you intend to do it from 7:00 to 11:00, but did you want the waiver from 7:00?
I want the waiver till midnight in case there's any kind of weather delay, you know. So, the absolute latest should probably be done is about 11:30.
I just caught that, because our agendas is 7:00 to 11:00, so I assume that in making the motion, I guess Jolly can confirm, but we'd want to make sure that the resolution that we pass in a couple of weeks matches Mr. West's intent.
Well, Councilmember Barr, if I may add, we are looking at maybe tweaking the schedule a little bit to where it goes 6:00 to 11:00 because of the transition of the bands, so we might open at 6:00. The first band would play from 6:30 to 8:00. There'd be an hour to transition into the new band, and the next band would play from 9:00 to 11:00. So, we may be looking, that's probably going to be more of the schedule now.
For logistical sake, I'll put it from 5:00 to midnight, just to account for all circumstances.
Thank you.
All right. Any concerns with putting that on the consent agenda? Would anyone from the audience like to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, Mr. West, it's on the consent agenda, which means you don't have to come back to see us in two weeks, but you're always welcome. And are you going to, when will ticket sales start?
If you're fine with it, we'd like to start later this week.
Are we okay with that, or should it, do you want to, I mean, you have to, sorry, I guess you could, my sense would be you could begin ticket sales as long as people understand that, you know, that if they don't get the noise waiver, they're going to, the bands are going to be pretty quiet.
Well, what we might, what we might be able to do is start ticket sales, but advertise a 6:00 p.m. start, but not a end time.
Yeah.
Pending this.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's on the consent agenda, but just, you know, to recognize the fact that the I is dotted, but the T is not crossed yet, so.
Well, and I want to be respectful to this process as well.
Well, thank you, and then will you let, will you let Sarah know, please, where tickets are going to be available, and I know there'll be information on Facebook, but we can, she can share that information directly with council.
It'll be the chamber website, livonia.org. It'll be QR code tickets on your phone to get in, so.
Great, will you just pass that along to Sarah, and we'll get everybody in the city to know what's going on with those, all right?
Thank you, folks, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your work in putting this event together. All right, item number two is also a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from James McGarland, owner of the Sports Locker Bar and Grill, to host a three-day event with live music in the parking lot business located at 30375 Plymouth Road on Friday, August 6, 2021, from 5:00 to 11:00. Saturday, August 7, 2021, from 2:00 to 11:00, and Sunday, August 8, 2021, from 2:00 to 9:00. Good evening, Mr. McGarland, nice to see you.
Nice to see you guys again. James McGarland, owner of Sports Locker Bar and Grill located at 30375 Plymouth Road. We are requesting a noise waiver. We put this event on, obviously, before COVID, two years ago. We had a great turnout, and we figured that we would spruce it up a little bit more this time and try to run a three-day event, ending Friday and Saturday night at 11:00 p.m., and then running into Sunday night, ending at 9:00 p.m., ending the event. We're hoping to have anywhere from 10 to 12 bands come in and run it on our property. Pretty much the same that we did last year with tenting the parking lot out, running the fencing around, bringing in security as well, with an outdoor bar and $10 cover each day.
Wonderful. Questions? Councilmember Donavick.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening. Great little spot you got there. I drive by it often, and good luck to you guys. Do you, you did it before, you said, right? It was a two-day event?
We only, we ran a one-day event. We did it on a Saturday.
Okay, and was it the same timeframe that you are proposing here?
I believe so. I believe that we requested till 11:00. I think we ended up, could run until about 10:30.
How was the turnout? Any issues?
We had zero issues. It was a great turnout.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, so normally, I would kind of question the fact of doing this three days in a row, but you're in the perfect spot in terms of not bothering residents, so good luck.
All right, just Councilmember McCullough, then Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam President. James, obviously, your establishment, been there many times, it's a great place. As my colleague, Mr. Jolly, said, yeah, you are in a perfect spot with the pandemic. I remember being there last year during the Father's Day bash. You guys had stuff, and I'm very happy to see that you guys are still doing well, obviously, post-pandemic. So, with this, I hope that this can, you know, spark up the new post-pandemic. You guys have a great time. What were the dates again? We have an August 6 and...
August 6, 7, and 8.
You're promoting it on your website. Hopefully, my family and I can stop by and have some fun, too. So, if there's no objection, I'd like to offer an approving for consent.
Thank you. Mr. McCullough, is there any other comments? Councilmember Toy, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Is it James?
Yes, ma'am.
What's your last name again?
McGarland.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure if it was that Irish drink or what, but anyhow, what I wanted to ask you, sir, is, or what I wanted to comment, actually, is I think it's super that you're doing this, and I wish you all success, because those of us in business have really taken a hit here, there, and everywhere, right? The thing that concerns me is, I guess we're going to take these individually, so if Joe Blow down at this bar comes in and wants three days, or maybe four or five, where does that set a precedence? That's all. I'm not trying to use as an example by any means. I'm just suggesting to the council, as we explore these kinds of venues, that we, you know, are, you know, taking it case by case. As was pointed out, your business is in a remote area, if you will, a great area. Plymouth Road's a wonderful street, but, you know, by the same token, we have to consider everybody else and be as fair as possible. So, thank you for doing this. I would be remiss if I didn't bring up that point, because I felt it was important, and I wish you much success.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy. It's been offered for the consent. We've had some comments, and one thing I'd just like to add, Mr. McGarland, one thing that I always remember about you is every taste of the spree, since you've had your business, you're there. And, you know, I've commented to you that that just sends a signal, right, about, I mean, first of all, it's good business. It gives you publicity, but second of all, as you know, they always need vendors for that event. You're always there, you never have an empty table, and you always have something really nice there, and we just appreciate that kind of community involvement, so thank you.
We can't wait to get back to it once it comes back around.
All right, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Donavick.
Real quick, you know, you're on live TV, and your family's back there taking pictures, so make sure you smile.
Very nice. And just one other question about the event. I didn't see this in the paperwork. Is this 21 and over?
This will be a 21 and over event, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so you're, it's on consent, and I think you know the process, which means you don't have to come back in two weeks, but we're always happy when you come back to see us.
Okay, thanks, yes.
All right, thank you. Item number three is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Heather McLaughlin, project manager of Loud and Live, to host the Hot Wheels Legends Tour Event with live music in the parking lot of Walmart Supercenter located at 29555 Plymouth Road on Saturday, August 27, 2021, from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. And I understand, Sarah, that we, the petitioner, was not able to be here, correct? So, we need to go from the notes in the package.
Madam President.
Councilmember Jolly.
I will offer this as an approving on the regular agenda.
Okay.
Just to move it along.
All right, and you know, the petitioner's not able to be here because she lives in Wisconsin, I believe, is the issue.
I know. I'll just state for the record, I'm looking this up now, and it's, literally is what it sounds like it is. It's a Hot Wheel event for kids and for adults, and I think with this agenda...
I didn't see that.
I mean, I'll say this, I say this in a very positive way. I think the summer of 2021 is going to be party time in Livonia, because we've got nothing but events going on and celebrations all over the place, so.
We've got Hot Wheels, we've got everything, right?
What more do you need, right? Yeah.
And council meetings in person, as Vice President Barr pointed out, so. All right, so that's been offered by Councilmember Jolly for the regular agenda. Does anyone have any comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Item number four is a block party request. This comes to us, and I apologize if I mispronounce any names, Ray Franges, Jim and Linda Romrell, and Ed and Ari Wilson, to be held Sunday, August 21, 2021, from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Brentwood Street between Meadowlark Street and Jacklyn Drive, with the rain date of Sunday, August 22, 2021.
Madam President.
Vice President Barr.
It's always my pleasure to prove this for my old Compton Village neighbors. I'd offer this for consent with no objection. They've been doing this for years.
Excellent. Offered for consent by Mr. Barr. Any objections to place on this consent? Anyone from the audience have any comments? Seeing none, we'll place that in consent. Item number five is a request for authorization to waive the sealed bid process and purchase from sole source provider. This comes to us from the Division of Police to replace the current universal power supply known as UPS from budgeted funds. Good evening, Captain Yon.
Good evening, Council President McIntyre and councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here in person once again. As you know, the Police Department is requesting this authorization to replace this Eaton Universal Power Supply Unit. This unit provides uninterrupted power for our department during any power outage to our critical infrastructure, which includes the communications equipment and includes our 9/11 system. The current unit that we have was placed in 2005 and is out of date. All of the batteries were replaced in that unit in 2013, and they are at their end of life, so the unit itself is no longer up to par. And the company that we're utilizing for this is RC Merchant and Company, and they are the sole source provider for this system, and they were the provider for the last system. And we are looking to have that waived. This replacement's going to include the removal and disposal of the current system, and the Division of Police is requesting your approval to waive the sealed bid process pursuant to the finance ordinance and authorize our purchase from RC Merchant and Company, and then the installation by RCI Electrical, which is the city's approved electrical contractor. The funds for this project are coming out of our 9/11 fund and not our general fund.
Thank you, Captain Yon. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Well, if we don't have this, we could be in serious trouble, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm going to offer an approving, and I'll ask for consent, if that's all right with the rest of the members.
Are there any objections? Anyone from the audience? And I don't think you've been to see us since your promotion to captain, and, you know, I have to keep correcting myself from calling you Lieutenant Yon to calling you Captain Yon, and congratulations, and...
Thank you.
Very, very happy to be working with you in your new position as one of our captains.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Captain Yon. Have a good evening.
Yep.
All right, item number seven is a request, I'm sorry, item number six is a request to utilize the Greenmead property for the 172nd, 73rd, and 74th Annual Highland Games. This comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation, the St. Andrews Society of Detroit, for the proposed game days of August 6 through 7, 2021, August 5 through 6, 2022, and August 4 through 5, 2023. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us present this tonight. I'm Kathy Hassy, 5940 Pontiac Trail in Orchard Lake. I am the chairman of the St. Andrews Society of Detroit's Highland Games. As you just mentioned, Kathleen, this will be our 172nd Highland Games, where the oldest continuous games in North America. I won't do a whole sales pitch, but you did say it's party time in Livonia, so this would fit right in. And we do have a good party. We've never, we have a great relationship with the city, with the Police Department, with the Fire Department. Parks and Rec now is taking over with us, and we look forward to working, you know, more with them. We've just had a great run here in Livonia. We support your hotels. We're a member of the chamber, but we just, it's a good party, and it's a family event all day on Saturday. Some of you have been there. I know Scott and Brandon said he might even come and try and throw the cabers tonight, or that we...
She was Councilman Jolly on that one.
Okay.
He likes finishing second in almost everything he does.
You never can tell.
Madam President, I mean.
Okay. Of course, you'll all be welcome, but if you have any questions or things about the Highland Games, about our Livonia?
Councilmember Jolly.
So, no questions for you. We're very happy to have it. I was actually going to suggest that Mr. Davis does some kind of a caber tossing demonstration for us, but on a serious note, there is honestly maybe very little that happens in Livonia that is not as special as having the bands walking across the field at Greenmead during your event, and it's an absolutely great thing, and we appreciate continuing to host this. Thank you.
Oh, you want to go to Ted, sorry.
Ted, did you want to, did you have anything to add before?
Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation, what Kathy said, is what I, yes, just what she said.
Councilmember Toy.
Well, Kathy, you're like an old shoe. You just keep coming back, and you do wonderful work.
I know, but in this one, yeah.
Maybe that was a bad way to express it. That probably belongs in Highland with the woodchews, yeah.
And I have not been with the games for 172 years.
Yeah, I didn't think so. I didn't think so.
But Laura has approved everyone.
There are days that I think... Okay, well, we helped, we...
I already told them, again.
We appreciate your consideration, and we hope that we will be...
Certainly, well, I was going to offer an approving, if that's okay with the rest of my colleagues.
On consent?
Sure, on consent. And get you out of here so you can go home and relax.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you all very much, and we hope to see you all by 6:00 and 7:00.
If you can bear us for just one more moment, Ms. Hassy, I'd like to say that last summer, so many things were missed. I mean, too numerous to count, but I think those of us who, you know, been in Livonia for a long time and enjoyed these games for many years, that was one of the things that just really kind of underscored, right? How our lives just, we didn't have the things, and the, you know, bands marching, everything else. That is a, that is really a special festival, as you know, and we're very, very proud to have it in Livonia, and we can't wait.
And we did, we did retain our 171st banner, because Greenmead in the city let us have the one, we only could have 100 people.
Yep.
But we did it, and we had a few bagpipers and some dancers. We didn't have the tug-of-war and all the other things, but we had, the 100 people that came had a good time, so we can still say we're the oldest.
And I should have indicated, you found a way to do it, but, you know, we weren't able, wasn't able to be the citywide, really statewide, to be honest with you.
It was almost invitation only, and, you know, that, we have a membership in St. Andrews Society of 450, so there were 350 unhappy people, but we did it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll look forward to seeing you in August.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, that's been offered on consent. All right. Item number seven is a request to execute the amended two-year contract between the City of Livonia and County of Wayne for housing rehabilitation program funding and homebuyer assistance funding, and request to authorize the Director of Housing to approve the 2022 through 2024 home contract funding. This comes to us from the Livonia Housing Commission to extend the city's participation in the Wayne County Home Investment Partnership Consortium from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024, with an average annual allocation of $100,000 to the City of Livonia. This is Council Resolution 316-20, 168-18, 08-15, 397-12, 323-12, 196-11, and Council Resolution And amazingly, I do not see Ms. Isaacson with us this evening.
Madam President, all of those numbers you stated sound great. I'll offer an approving for consent. I think everything's in order in the packet. It makes sense.
Yes.
All right. I'm going to ask that we place on the regular only... Pardon me? Only because I think it gives Brandy an opportunity sometimes to talk about what this program is and the importance to, you know, stable housing in Livonia and neighborhood... Keeping neighborhoods strong. So if that's... I'd like to put that in the regular.
It's perfectly fine with me.
All right. So we'll place it on the regular. Item number eight, and thank you, Mr. Jolly, is a request for approval to amend the 2016 through 2021 consolidation plan and the 2019 through 2020 annual action plan. This comes from the Livonia Housing Commission to allocate CARES Act funding and to the Community Block Grant, CDBG, to include activities that prevent and respond to the spread of infectious diseases such as the coronavirus disease, 2019 COVID-19. These cover Council Resolution 140-20, 178 through 19, and 181 through 16.
Madam President.
I'll go first to Councilmember Toy.
Toy, because I remember everything. Anyhow, I was going to say, we probably should put this on the regular then because of the nature of it, and, you know, Brandy can maybe be here for that.
Okay.
She had an emergency or something. I don't know.
All right. We'll put that on the regular. Item number nine is a request... I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Rob. Okay, sorry about that.
You were going to follow my lead?
All right. Number nine, request to approve salary and fringe benefit adjustments for the classification of police chief and deputy police chief. This comes to us from the Civil Service Division for the period of December 1, 2020, through November 30, 2023. Good evening, Ms. Mayor.
Good evening. I thought I was number 10. Good evening, Madam President, council members. It's wonderful to see everyone in person. It's really great. Welcome back. As you know, the Livonia Command Officers Association ratified a three-year contract on February 5, 2021. The agreement is effective 12/1, 2020, through November 30, 2023. Historically, the negotiated LCOA salary and benefit adjustments are extended to the police chief and deputy police chief classifications. On May 19, 2021, the Civil Service Commission approved the recommended adjusted salary and benefit changes for the police chief and deputy police chief classifications. These changes were reviewed with Mayor Brosnan, and she's agreed to extend them effective 12/1, 2020, if approved by council. I will be happy to answer any questions about the adjusted salary and benefits.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Madam Chair. I would be happy to offer approving on consent, if there's no objection.
Councilmember Toy.
Ms. Mayor, can you give us an example of what those numbers look like, please?
What the numbers look like? Definitely. One more second. So mirroring the Livonia Command Officers Association, the three-year salary increases will be as follows. Effective December 1, 2020, is a 2.5% increase. Effective December 1, 2021, is a 3% increase, and effective December 1, 2022, is a 2% increase. And then some of the benefits that were increased include increased personal business time from 16 hours per year to 24 hours per year. We are replacing the $900 annual dental reimbursement with a new dental insurance plan effective March 1, 2021. Replace the current optical benefit with a new vision insurance plan that includes an employee contribution of 15% of the cost. Limitation on... Well, that's not a dollar. Increase the city's contribution to the defined contribution pension plan for all members from 12% to 14%. And number seven is key, a successor police chief or a deputy police chief that is selected from the LCOA ranks would have all of the benefits of the current CBA. That was important to have that in there so that there was no question about that.
And if I may, how does this compare with other cities around our size or within... You know, I don't care. Pick a number, 10,000, 15,000 people, like Warren, for instance? I know that's not in Wayne County, but...
Well, I'm happy to say that we're currently involved in participating in the Conference of Western Wayne Salary Survey.
Right.
So we're going to have new numbers. We didn't get new numbers in 2020, but we do believe that our benefits and our salary adjustments are competitive.
Okay, so we are able to attract with this kind of salary kind of...
Yes.
Venue, if you will.
Yes, and these classifications are typically... They come from within...
From within, yes.
Right, promotions.
I just want to make sure that we're on even ground with other cities, if not above.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy. This... One question, Denise. With the condition that this applies to a successor chief or deputy chief that comes from the LCOA ranks, as we are... Has been announced that Captain Gorowski will be replacing Chief Cade, so this will apply to Captain Gorowski, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. And do we have... Does someone offer that?
I did.
You did for consent, correct? All right. And item number 10 is a request to improve increase in compensation for the Director of Emergency Preparedness. This too comes to us from the Department of Civil Service to be in the same compensation range as the senior police sergeant. Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. On May 19, 2021, the Civil Service Commission approved a request from Mayor Brosnan in conjunction with a proposal from Police Chief Cade, seeking a change in the compensation range for the Director of Emergency Preparedness classification. The range includes a top step or step five that mirrors that of a senior police sergeant. You have a copy of the correspondence from the mayor that outlines reasons for this request, including the exponential increase in responsibilities and scope this position has experienced, and the fact that this is a critical position for the safety of our city employees and our community. If approved, the new compensation range will put us in a comparable position with our neighboring communities. This position receives salary reimbursement grant funding of approximately 35% per year through FEMA's Emergency Management Performance Grant, and additionally, this position is responsible for obtaining grants for the city. And I will be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Toy.
I'd like to offer an approving. I think those are great reasons, and you've answered my questions about other cities, et cetera, so thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you.
Nice question.
Certainly.
So this is... This question is not indicative of any lack of support for this issue. I think it's well deserved. I think it's appropriate. Were you able to look at this at all in terms of identifying who held this position in other communities? Was it typically a responsibility that was held by a uniformed officer, or did they have an independent or rather civilian person filling that role as we do?
That's not something I can answer for you today, but it would be easy to get the answer to that.
Yeah, I'm just... It's just a pure curiosity, because I know in the past that at certain points, we had had that person, a uniformed officer. So if you could provide that, maybe, it would just be good to know. Thank you.
Definitely will. You're welcome.
I just have a couple of comments. I think I remember when we moved this position over to civilian. Part of the reason was because it was getting expanded responsibilities beyond those that normally fall to the uniformed... To our Police Department. And I can't think of one position in this city that I think this is long overdue, and it, you know, beginning with the first days of COVID, when we realized our Director of Emergency Preparedness was called upon to deal with policy, to deal with politics, to figure out conflicting guidelines from federal, from state, state guidelines that were being issued multiple times a week that contradicted each other, as well as all the practical operational things, and trying to find grants at the time, right? And equipment and everything else. And there were a great number of people who worked extremely hard during COVID, and I, you know, everyone, as we've discussed, in the cities to be commended for what was done, taking furloughs. Everything that was asked of everyone who worked for the city, they stood up and did. I don't think there's one person in the city during COVID who worked harder than our Director of Emergency Preparedness or had more on his or her shoulders, just in terms of scope of responsibility. Everybody played a role. So I just... 100% and overdue.
And if I may?
Please.
As far as leadership is concerned, I don't know how we would have gotten through it without Brian Kahn.
And that was the comment. And again, we're... You know, it's compensation. You always want to look at not the person, but the position.
Right, right.
But I think what this says to me is we better make sure that in the unfortunate event that Mr. Kahn ever decides to retire, and we hope he doesn't, but that whoever comes next, the expectation's been set, right, by what we're doing with this position. But this is very much overdue because we've seen what falls to this position. So anyway, so thank you for bringing this to us, and that was offered on consent by Councilmember Toy. All right. Thank you, Denise. Have a good evening.
Good point.
All right. Item number 11 is a waiver petition. This comes to us from the Planning Commission regarding petition 2020-11-02-10 submitted by LS Equity LLC to revise the plans approved by City Council on January 13, 2021. This was Council Resolution 14-21 for proposed redevelopment of a commercial shopping center, shops of Livonia, including demolishing a portion of the existing building, constructing a full-service restaurant with drive-through facilities, Chick-fil-A, constructing an addition, and renovating the exterior facade of the existing building and constructing a multi-tenant retail building with drive-through facilities on property located on the north side of Plymouth Road between Haller Avenue and Middle Belt Road, 29250 through 29350 Plymouth Road in the southwest quarter of Section 25. Mr. Taramina.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you indicated, this is a request to revise the plans for the shops of Livonia, which was the name given to the shopping complex at the northeast corner of Middle Belt and Plymouth Roads. And as originally presented, this property was going to be redeveloped really in three phases. First phase involved demolishing a portion of the existing shopping center and constructing a new Chick-fil-A restaurant that's identified here on the plans. Phase two involved the development of a new outlaw building identified on the plans as Retail 1 near Plymouth Road. And then Phase 3 would entail reconstructing most of the shopping center's front and side facades, as well as additions to that building. So what the petitioner is asking now are for a number of changes. The basic plan still looks the same. What has changed is a new addition is proposed off of the rear of the building identified as Retail 1. I'll show you what that looks like. That's this area back here, this expansion area, really is for the purpose of a truck dock, but along with that, they would include a compactor, a temporary generator, as well as an enclosed recycling and dumpster area. With that change also is a reduction in the size of the addition that was at the rear of Retail Building, or excuse me, Tenant 2. This area was originally shown as at about 5,300 square feet. It's now been reduced to 3,500 square feet. And what that does, along with the widening of the drive approach on Middle Belt Road, it allows trucks to service the area behind this tenant space number one, proceed east and be able to turn around and exit out the same driveway. And the benefit there is that it prevents trucks from maneuvering through the parking lot and going to Plymouth Road. So some additional changes, some additions to the landscaping here really discourage any trucks from maneuvering in the areas that'll be used primarily for patrons of the shopping center. The next change, more significant change, is probably the reduction of the size of this retail building. One, originally it was about eight, just under 9,000 square feet. The revised plans show it as 6,000 square feet. About eight parking spaces have been added to the east side of the building. Not a significant change, but it is a reduction overall in the amount of gross leasable area. The parking does change overall. This actually reduces or increases, I should say, the deficiency to about 50 parking spaces. So originally, they were required to go before the zoning board of appeals with a deficiency of 16 spaces. This increases to 50 spaces. However, I will tell you that under the new Livonia Vision 21 ordinance...
My apologies. I couldn't hear right.
That... That... That deficiency would be only 12 spaces. So one of the things we looked at, as you know, is changing the parking regulations. In this particular case, it's going to substantially reduce the deficiency from, again, 50 down to only 12 spaces. Then on the Chick-fil-A, the changes here involve some extensions of the canopy. There's one on the west side of the building. I'll show what rendering and what that looks like. What they'd like to do is extend that canopy out from the building west for a distance of about 30 feet, and what that does is it covers the two pickup lanes. So on the west side of the building, where you have the pickup window, that entire area will be covered by a canopy. It allows vehicles and the employees protection. The same thing is happening on the east side of the building, where they take the orders. So two canopies are being added to the design, really for the benefit of the employees and the patrons of the drive-up facilities. Two monument signs have been added, but that's something that they would typically be allowed for. There's been minor changes to the bypass lane, but again, nothing significant. Additional landscaping is provided on the plan, as well as detailed landscape plan. And then just to really look at the... What those canopies look like. These are what they look like extended. Probably the best view of the one at the pickup window is this view. It gives you a sense of scale, and that will require variance from the zoning board of appeals. That's it. Planning Commission is recommending approval of all the changes that are submitted.
Donovan, Julie.
Thank you, Madam President, for Mr. Taramina. For the canopy, are there gutters added on that, or how does the water...
Those are details that I don't have available. Maybe the owner of the shopping center, Mr. Jarboe, can answer that.
Good evening. How you doing? Frank Jarboe, Symmetry Management. I'm not too sure about the gutters on those, but anything that's can delivered in that size generally has to have... The water's got to go somewhere, so I can check on the detail and get it back to Mr. Taramina, and he can get it over to you guys.
Yeah, just interesting water management, because you know, you have the landscaping right there, and if water's just falling off the side of the building, I just wonder what that does to landscaping. Another question is, to the north, that entrance where the semi trucks would be coming and going, is there a concern with trucks and going one way and the vehicles going the other way from the drive-through? Or that's not a concern?
No, those are separated, and maybe if I can show you what that looks like. So the drive-up traffic, as you can see here, is really confined to the two lanes. There's a striped area. Whether or not there'd be additional protection in this area, I'm not sure, but all of the traffic really needed for the trucks should be separated from the drive-up traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Taramina. Thank you.
Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So with you bringing these changes before us, are you close to identifying occupants for these properties?
We've got a lot of traction ever since, you know, the news came about Chick-fil-A and what we've done, and we've gone from phasing the project from three phases to doing everything at once. So we're really close to identifying. We're in negotiations with two other tenants and somebody that maybe take the whole pad up front, rather than make it a small shop space. So just a lot of things swirling right now.
Yeah, you know, in terms of that, I'm happy to hear you say that, because I think sometimes these outlots and some of these strip, you know, retail facades, they're just broken up into little tiny stores, and sometimes, unfortunately, some of those don't make it, and there's a lot of turnover and stuff like that. So if you can get somebody in there that's one user, maybe more of an established user, obviously that's good for you and your bottom line and your security.
Yeah.
But it's a better product for us as a city as well.
So with our firm, we've been developing commercial real estate across Michigan, Ohio, and Indiana for the last 25 years, and what we look at always is a tenant mix, what complements the center at the very end of the day. And if you're building a small shop retail up front out there, it's actually, I mean, obviously, it's easier for us to have one single tenant, credit union, bank, or, you know, something that obviously fits the ordinance that we can provide there. It's just easier and better, and helps service the center better. And that's why we even took a look at it, and it was originally 9,000 square feet, and we said, we need to take a better look at this and maybe reduce the size and add a little more parking to it.
Great. Thank you.
My pleasure. Anyone else? Councilmember McCullough.
Councilmember McCullough. Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair to probably the petitioner. I love the idea of going to one phase. Does this change, you know, obviously, construction timing? If this canopy still needs to go to the ZBA, when are you targeting breaking ground?
So we would... Can we get a permit today? Not going to happen? So no, as soon as we're submitting, actually, we're trying to work with the building department to get a demo permit in advance to start maybe doing some of the demo work as the rest of the permits line up. You have to understand, we're, you know, not only permitted through the city, the MDOT, and Wayne County itself. So, I mean, it's a process. So we would hope to, you know, we want to hit the ground running. We have to deliver for pad-ready conditions for Chick-fil-A's for them to come in and obviously build their own building. That's the kind of deal we struck with them, for them to construct it. They like to do that.
And obviously, Office Depot, I think, is, is no longer, right?
Yeah, yeah, they've already vacated, yeah.
Okay. The other question I do have, and this is through the chair to Mr. Toramina, does the traffic plan and the stacking to the traffic, does that still come over? Should we make sure we address that for the Chick-fil-A?
You'll recall the approving resolution from January requires the La Bonia Police Department to approve that temporary stacking and plan.
And that stays?
That, that'll remain, yes.
Okay.
It's part of the resolution that those, all those other conditions remain in effect.
Perfect. Overall, the additions and the modifications that you've made, especially having, you know, patronize some of the other Chick-fil-A's, that canopy is gold, especially in winter months.
Yes, it does help out a lot.
No, I'd be, is there, do we have a motion on the table yet? I'd be happy to offer an approving for consent and hopefully get you that permit so you can get those shovels in the ground.
Thank you very much.
If there's no objections.
Councilmember Toy?
Thank you. I just, to the petitioner, Mr. Toramina and staff, thank you very, very much for this project. That's very, very needed in that area. You know, not that it's a bad area, I don't mean it that way. It's just retail-wise and the way things are happening, it's a great shot in the arm for down there. Appreciate it so much.
We appreciate that, too. I mean, we, we, we chased, I don't think I remember telling you in the first time we met, we chased this out-of-state owner for years in order to sell it to us, to the point where we're here to get him to jump on a plane and go see him in his own office before you would even, you know, take our call. And we knew that it was ripe for redevelopment. We believe in the community, we believe in the area, and we appreciate Mr. Toramina and the rest of the staff working with us.
Absolutely. Great, great. Thank you.
Madam President? Oh, I was just saying, I wanted to speak before you-
No, go ahead, please.
So I drove by there the other day, and everything that you're proposing looks great. And I don't know that, that you're the person for this, or Mr. Toramina is the, what's going on with the pharmacy on the corner there? Is that open, or it doesn't appear to be open?
So it's, it's under development presently. Permits, I believe, have been issued, and it will be a medical-related use. Be a mix of tenants, but I think primarily it'll be, IHA will be occupying, I think, a significant part of the building. At least that was the, that, that has been the plan all along. And I think actually Mr. Jarboe has been in contact with the owners and the tenants there. And I believe things are moving forward to have that building re-occupied shortly.
I'm glad to hear that, because that would actually be such a wasted opportunity to have you do all this work and have a vacant building squarely on the corner of Middlebelt and Plymouth Road.
I appreciate that, and, and, you know, we, we thought the same thing, too. So we reached out to them, and they, we knew a couple of people that are working in their organization. They needed a couple of, a couple of things for us on construction easements, a couple of things that they needed done, and we were happy to work with them.
Awesome. Thank you.
Madam President?
Councilmember Donavich?
Thank you through the chair, the petitioner. Kind of like Councilwoman Toy mentioned, I'm excited for this project. I live right next to it. A lot of neighbors in Clement Circle have been talking about it. It's been sitting vacant, or the grass is overgrown and just an ice ore. And to kind of envision this project and what you're going to bring to the table and the level of investment, it's exciting. I, I know it's going to offer exciting time for the residents. I appreciate your, your investment in the community. Yeah, that's it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I just want to say, I don't think that this one change got called out in our discussion, but I saw that Chick-fil-A wants a flagpole in front of Chick-fil-A, which is fantastic and especially appropriate, given that today's Flag Day, so.
Yep.
Very happy to see that and the proposed changes, along with all the other great changes. All right, that was offered by Brandon. Thank you. That's, that's what I had in my notes. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. All right, and thanks, Mark. And finally, we go to number 12. This two is a waiver petition coming to us from the Planning Commission regarding petition 2021-03-02-06 submitted by Tissio Architects Incorporated to construct a freestanding building with drive-through facilities and, and add drive-up window facilities to the southern end of the shopping, the southern end unit of the shopping center on property located on the west side of Middlebelt Road between Clarita Avenue and Seven Mile Road 19043 through 19053 Middlebelt Road and 29475 through 24943 Seven Mile Road in the northeast quarter of Section 11. Good evening, Mr. Tissio. Are, are you, Mark, or do you have a-
I'm happy to provide a brief outline of the request. Three months ago, council gave first reading to the rezoning of this property. Right now, it's, it's three different zoning classifications. This is the Mid-Seven Shopping Center at the southwest corner of Seven Mile and Middlebelt Roads. The request on the rezoning is to change the zoning. The entire parcel would be under the C2 classification, and, and the primary purpose for that is to develop an outlot adjacent to Middlebelt Road, and I'll just jump right to that, that plan. And just to get everyone's reference, this is the main shopping center, as you know. It's anchored by Pet Supplies Plus here at the north end. Planet Fitness occupies a large space near the center of the shopping complex. And then the area that we're looking at primarily is between an existing Boston restaurant and then the Wendy's Restaurant to the south. Now, both, both the Boston Market and the Wendy's are not on this property, but the proposed outlot would be within the parking lot of the shopping complex, and this is an enlarged plan of what that would, would look like. So it would be a building that would have, a one-story building about 2,000 square feet. It would impact roughly 50 parking spaces. You can see that additional parking would be added adjacent or would be reconfigured immediately to the north, and it also shows a drive-up. So this is primarily to attract a drive-in or a restaurant with drive-through facilities. You can see the lane that would be used for the, the drive-in service and the pickup window located here on the south side of the, the building. That lane would be able to accommodate sufficient number of vehicles to meet the ordinance requirements. What it does not do is provide a ready bypass lane. There would be some bypass opportunities for some of the vehicles as they enter this queue, the queue here to, to exit out at the parking lot. This is a striped area. So that's one opportunity, but once they get to a certain point, they really are stuck in the drive-through lane until they are able to, to exit. The building itself would be setback roughly 25 feet from Middlebelt Road right of way, the, the property line. The ordinance requires 60 feet, so this is something that will require a variance. The building itself is a combination of materials that are really intended to match the design of the shopping complex, so that's why you see the brick, the cultured stone, and the ephes, along with the decorative cornice on the top of the building. So this, this pretty much matches the design of the, the main shopping center. In terms of parking, as I indicated, this is going to impact the parking. It does increase, go from a slight surplus to a deficiency under today's standards of 41 parking spaces, but when we look at the, the ordinance that's coming online, that it actually will, there will be a surplus of 17 parking spaces. So there may not be the need for the variance, depending on the timing between when this project is approved and when the, the new zoning ordinance gets approved. The other main part of this request is something that the Planning Commission has decided should be put on hold until the impact of the outlot is determined on the traffic and circulation within this shopping complex, is the addition of another drive-up facility located here at the south end of the, of the building. And part of the complication, I think, that they had understanding is all the things happening in this, in this area of the shopping center. You're aware that there was the addition of the, the teller machine here, the Bank of America, the kiosk that was added here at the south end of the property, the addition of the drive-through facilities with the outlot, and then the addition of another drive-up operation here, which would be the south end cap of the existing shopping center. And the only way to facilitate traffic to that drive-up would to, would be for the cars to maneuver along the backside of the building. Now, this is a distance of over 500, nearly 600 feet before they can even get to this pickup window, and they have to go through the service area. And the petitioner is making an effort to clean up the back of the shopping center, including repaving and, and putting some of these dumpsters in a better location so as not to interfere with the traffic. But once you get down to the south end, really goes from a two-way traffic circulation to a one-way traffic circulation. They go with parallel spaces instead of 90-degree parking spaces. Planning Commission just felt that until this is developed, until the city can get a better understanding of the impact of this, that it would be better to hold off on that.
Counsel, would you like to hear from Mr. Tissio? Do you have questions for, do you have questions for Mr. Toramina before we go to the petitioner? Ben?
Honesty, nice to be back live. Thank you, Mark. Again, we're here to seek approval for the project as, as fully presented. No, we don't have tenants for either the outlot or the end cap. They've all told the owner, soon as you get site plan approval, let us know, and then we'll start negotiating. So they're waiting for that. The outlot is specifically designed to match the colors and materials of the shopping center. Should by some reason the actual tenant change the design, then yes, we'll be back before the city to get approval for that. There is, there's a possibility, if we needed, that we can provide a somewhat of a, of a bypass lane for the outlot, similar to what is done next door at the Smoothie King, where they would drive straight through and then pull out. So that is available, should it be needed. The, the rear of the center is going to be all cleaned up. Everything's going to be in dumpsters. As a matter of fact, talking to the owner the other day, he apologized, he had a family commitment tonight, that he's looking at getting in a compactor to reduce even the number of trash containers that are going to be in the back. Now, we have everything in seven enclosures, and we're cleaning up the whole back. He's also willing to extend beyond his property line up to the fence. The fence separating the two properties are about three feet off. Our property ends at the asphalt paving, and the owners of the west center decided to put in a new fence three feet off. I think it was a result of putting it where the concrete curb was existing and not taking it out. So that, he's willing to offer that to clean that up as well. I did submit some new photos regarding a guardrail at the end of the sidewalk so that there's not an interference for the people that, should they go further south, don't step off in front of the, the car coming out of the, the drive-up window. And then welcome to answering your question.
And I should have indicated, Mr. Tissio and Mark and Council, that we did have new data with the drawings that you've presented. Vice President Barr and then Councilmember Jolly, and then Councilmember McCullough.
Sorry, I had to unmute first. Sorry. Nothing? Nothing? Late night, chief humor, and I get nothing?
It took me a minute. Sorry.
Oh, man. Tough crowd. Okay. I, we've have, obviously had a chance to look at this project in detail in the past, and when we talked about the rezoning, we, we discussed it quite a bit. I, I'm in favor of this, and I do think, I mean, I recognize that it's weird, the drive-through situation on the, the shopping center, but I, I think it's market realities that will, should constrain that, not us. I don't see any issue from a city perspective with doing that. I, I question the market viability of it, but if the owner thinks that they can make it work, that's fine. And frankly, I hope it does work for a couple of reasons. Number one, as has already been mentioned, it's going to provide incentive to clean up an alleyway that it will end up looking a lot nicer than, than what it was. The other thing is, we know that with these types of shopping centers, those end caps are, are less marketable than the things out by the main road. And these are the, I would presume, the toughest spaces in the shopping center to lease out. And so this is a great way to draw traffic to, to the back of that shopping center and, and hopefully make the entire shopping center more vibrant, not to mention the outlot building that's going out in front of it, which we all know what impact that's had on other shopping centers in the city. One other thing that I want to point out that I really like about this is there's significant landscaping and green space being added to this. And I was just recently, a couple of months ago, my family was in Florida, and one of the things that just, so at least in the area of Orlando that we go typically, one of the things that always catches my eye down there is how thick the vegetation is in the middle of the parking lots, just when you go to the grocery store. And, you know, I, I mentioned this to Ben recently, and, and the owner here, and, and they pointed out that, you know, how hard that is here with the salt and the snow and everything. I get it. But, you know, this is not Florida-like, like we're creating here, but, but that's a big piece of concrete there right now with, and there's a ton of green space being added on here, way more than I would have expected with a project like this. So to me, there's a lot of things to like about this. Perhaps there's more questions, but I would offer an approving, and if there's no objection, for consent.
Councilmember Jolly?
I agree with the, pretty much everything Mr. Barr said. And what I'm going to say next is a little crazy. No, admittedly so, but when you're, I, I trust your reputation that you're going to make this work, right?
Yes, sir.
And I trust all the market stuff that Scott just said as well. But I can't help but think those people are going to be looking at that wall of the back of all the other facilities there. And, and this is just not, I'm not going to hold you to this, but this is, I'll just say this for everybody else and for the way that we think kind of about these things. This, to me, seems like a blank white canvas. It would be ideal for some sort of mural or some sort of public artwork or something like that. It would also make it something interesting to look at while those people are driving through there. And I know, I, you know, I oftentimes call you professor because you are a long-tenured professor. I, I would really love to see something like that here, and I, I mean, I would love, I would love for you to at least bring it back to them and see if there's something they could do. I know, you know, that there are plenty of students, there's plenty of opportunities to have people do this potentially on the cheap, but make it more interesting as well. I mean, we all have those recollections of seeing something cool when we were younger or seeing something that was noticeable. We are in this area in particular, and oftentimes everywhere in La Bonia, there's a lot of, you know, chain kind of situations that we're looking at and stuff like that, but if there was an opportunity to make this something interesting, I would like you to at least bring it back to them. And if it dies in that conversation, that's fine, but it's, it's worth spending two minutes to talk about.
I like your idea.
Thank you, sir.
I will explore that.
Who is next? Donavich or McCullough? Donavich.
Thank you, Madam President. For the petitioner, to Councilmember Jolly's point, that's what I was hoping to accomplish is hopefully something along that back wall, because right now it just looks like white brick, white cinder block. So I was hoping that you could do something with that. And my question was, what kind of signage is added to direct people to, to go to that drive-through? Because it is, it is unique, right? You're used to just-
On the, the drawings itself, we do have a series of signs that have been worked out with a sign company. So we would either have to reduce the size of them, because I think they're bigger than the ordinance allows, or see if we can get a variance for it. So there will be sufficient signage, and like, memory will come back. Once you go through the drive-through, you go through an area, you tend to remember the flow. So it'll be the first time users that'll, that'll need the signage, but once you go through there.
I would like to note that I've been stuck at the Boston Market Drive-Thru when they ran out of chicken.
Uh-oh. Off our property.
And that was, that was inconvenient, to say the least. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim's still waiting for his food at Chick-fil-A.
I refuse to be, no.
We're not, okay, we're not going back to Chick-fil-A.
I know, that's what I said.
Sorry, I'll, I'll gamble that out.
One more comment?
I, I was going to, if you'd like to, go ahead, please.
Hold on, I was just going to say, you know, what better way to kind of drag people back through that corridor there to have something interesting to look at?
Thank you. Ben, I just wanted to say that, and we've, we've talked, that I agree with Scott, right? This is, this is not, my call is to whether that's a good place for, if business believes they can make that drive-through work. It's, it's like when we've had comments and arguments about how many stacking positions Starbucks should have. My feeling is Starbucks knows a lot better than we do about how many stacking positions they need. For me, we get that alleyway cleaned up. I think our colleague Jim's idea about looking, you know, talk to the Arts Commission is, you know, it's out of the box, but who knows, right? I think that's a great comment, and it really ties in, and this is what we discussed, to me. We, we get a really ugly alley right now cleaned up.
Yes.
You know, and, and we get improvement, and the money that's being invested in that center, you know, and, and again, if, if the end cap is what Kevin feels that he needs to make that sell, he knows his business better than I do. And, and it's not adding to, yeah, it's, it's a little bit confusing maybe the first time, but it's not adding to the traffic issues on the roads, right? It's not taking away from any of the other businesses. I, I think it's a positive, so.
Thank you, yeah.
And, and I take, and I, and like most of us, I think like all of us, we consider very carefully what the Planning Commission's recommendations are.
Of course.
And we know they thought long and hard about this, and we respect their work, but, but I think in this case, we need to allow the, the site plan to include the drive-through without having a named tenant.
Yeah, thank you.
-and we know they thought long and hard about this, and we respect their work, but, but I think in this case, we need to allow the, um, the site plan to include the drive-through without having a named tenant.
Yeah, thank you, and that's one of the things that, that Mr. Denha had, had, he's owned the center for about six years-
Yeah.
-and I, that, he was the old comic store, I think was there for 10 years vacant or so, he can't get any traction on that corner with, on that end cap without a drive-through, everybody's talked to us, says, "Talk to me when we have a drive-through."
You guys know, he knows the business, and you know design, and you know how to make these things work, so-
We'll do our best.
Uh, Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President, through the chair to the petitioner, so I, I, it took me a while to kind of warm up, I remember when we looked at it the last time, there's a lot going on on the site, right?
Yes.
Um, the biggest concerns I have now in that back alley, um, is there gonna be asphalt upgrades, concrete upgrades?
Yes, correct.
I love the way that, I had a, you know, chance to kind of take a diver, a deeper dive into the site plan, and, you know, you might find that, a couple of the dump, the proposed dumpster locations, you might have to maneuver that, there might be some give and take, but I do like the way that you have it laid out, um, this goes back to being innovative, we've been built out so long, and that end cap, yeah, it was either a bookstore or comic book store, it's been out of business, vacant for, for years upon years, so, looking at this, you do have a lot, my biggest stressor is, um, obviously, and, and this goes to the, the ongoing property maintenance, with the amount of development, and I'm in, I'm in support, I, I, I think this is a great thing, um, this is gonna hopefully lock in some contracts with that end unit and the drive-through, um, my biggest concern is just making sure that they keep, uh, that line lane marking yearly, because if they don't, that, that puzzle could get kind of interesting, but, you know, you've got a lot going on, um, I, again, I value your expertise in this, and, uh, again, I'd like to look back in this in three years and say, "Hey, this is the gold standard of being, of reinventing an old complex," so-
I'll say that Mr. Denha gets those messages.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember White? Um, I also, I have no problem with the drive-through window on the south end, I understand the, um, all the comments that have been made on that, um, I agree with. Um, did I hear you say though on the outlot, drive-up window for the outlot building, that you could possibly put a bypass lane in there?
Uh, I, what I stated is, there's a, an escape point on the Smoothie King where, uh, Mark, if, could you go to that, um, blow-up site plan, we have that stacking right in the back, there appears to be, I think, probably about six spaces, we could literally go straight out onto the aisle rather than have to wait in line to make the turn, so it would be the same, or very similar to what Smoothie King has at their current location, which is right next door.
Okay, so you're still looking for us to waive the, the ordinance requirement for the bypass lane?
Yes.
And, uh, did, did someone make a motion already to approve this?
Yeah.
Are you okay with that second, um, aspect where we would waive the bypass lane for that outlot building? Who was the maker?
I was the maker.
Scott, you were the maker.
And I, I confess, I was researching another issue here and wasn't totally paying attention, so this is-
We have to waive the bypass lane in order for them to do this thing?
Well, the Planning Commission resolution says that their approval is subject to us waiving that requirement.
Okay, um, I, we've, it's not the ideal, but we have other situations that are like that, and I'm okay doing it.
Uh, Councilmember Toy?
If I may go to Mr. Tissio, uh, Mr. Tissio, I don't have a problem with it either.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll be real happy about that, um, uh, Mr. Tissio though, do you, um, know what kind of restaurants, so maybe, I mean, kinda?
What?
Who are you talking to?
Talking about, are some-
Bates, was it Bates?
Uh, you know, actually, I've had, um, I did the, the vape and smoke on Eight Mile Road, and they said, "Hey, Ben, you come through with a end cap that's got a drive-up window, we'd like to-"
Do that?
"-smoke shop, okay?" Uh, but their thinking is probably a smaller, local type of coffee shop.
Oh, okay, great, thank you.
Not something with a lot of traffic.
Okay.
Chick, whatever it is.
Thank you.
No way.
Chick.
No. Again, I'll gamble if I hear that, if we mention that name one more time tonight, just kidding.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, anyone else? So, the, uh, the Vice President has offered the, uh, motion for approval, and includes the Planning Commission requirement for the waiver of the bypass line on the outlot, is that correct? Get that right? All right, thank you, did you want that on the regular or consent? It's on consent, any objection, putting on consent?
Uh, it, it, uh, the rezoning companies, so that-
Oh, so it, so it can't, it can't go on consent, thank you for the reminder on that, because, because it's the rezoning with the site plan.
Yes, I understand, protocol.
You understand, and I forgot, good thing you're here and Sarah's here.
It's like you paid the big bucks.
Councilmember Jolly?
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Can you give us an answer about the mural idea possibly when you come back?
Yes, I'm gonna, if I wrote it down, I'm gonna talk to the client tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Tissio, thank you very much-
Thank you.
-and, um, thank you for always-